Good evening, everyone. Welcome to September 9th, 2025, meeting of the Regional School Committee. My name is Jeff Cassidy. I call this meeting to order at 5:33. We're pleased to hold this meeting in person at the Dover Sherburne Middle School, and we're also live streaming on DSC TV. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. First on our agenda, we do have community comments. We have provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment but who are not able to join us in person or prefer to attend virtually. So do we have any community comments? Any online, Denny?
Nope.
No, okay. And seeing nobody here in person, we can move on to our first agenda item, which is introduction of our student council representatives. But they're not here.
I know that our student council has chosen Evelyn Paul, a 10th grader, as our representative. I'm not sure if it's the time change of the meeting or perhaps fall sports and homework, but I'm sure she'll be joining us next time with a thorough update. But we're excited to have her. She subbed in ones last year and did a phenomenal job, so she'll be great for the committee.
Excellent. Look forward to meeting her. That moves us to our superintendent comments.
Thank you. I'll be brief, because most of my comments will be covered in the joint meeting at 6:30. But I just wanted to start by thanking Mr. Smith and Mr. David Keegan for a very smooth opening of school. This is my ninth opening in the district, and I think it's been, knock on wood, the smoothest so far, and that's thanks to the leadership of both middle and high school and the teachers being fully prepared to greet our students. And of course, along with all of our educators, we have the IT folks, our custodians, food service, bus drivers, groundskeepers, central office team, that all make it possible. So many thanks to all of those folks for supporting us through the summer and being able to launch on a solid note in August. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, so we have our financial reports next.
Yeah, so welcome, everybody. You have in your packet sort of a crossover where for your work report where we have the remainder of fiscal year '25 warrants that we have processed since we last met in June, and then the fiscal year '26 warrants that we have processed since July 1st. So those are listed for your review, and know that now Jeff actually is your signer. And again, if you have any questions ever or want to see the details, they're actually in central office, so feel free to stop in. But we provide this, because you only have the one signer, we do provide a list every time you meet of warrants that have been processed since we last met. This also, or we're still sort of cleaning up fiscal year '25, so the financial report that's in your packet tonight actually is the final June 30th of 2025. We will present your first fiscal year '26 in October, knowing that our first payroll for really this year is happening this week. And so the summer is sort of a smaller subset of our operating expenditures, and so we really, until we get that first payroll in and encumbered, we don't have great numbers for you, so we're going to close up '25 this evening, and then we'll introduce where we are in fiscal year '26 next week. I think the most important page to look at is the roll forward of excess and deficiency. We've already talked about a lot of the variances. I still included your statement of revenue, your statement of appropriations, but I think the roll forward sort of summarizes the year for us. So if you look at that schedule, we start with last year certified E and D, so our free cash, and then we sort of roll forward. So you can see that our revenue surplus was the $256,000. That's going to tie to your revenue statement. Our operating surplus was $477,000 and some dollar change. That ties to your status of appropriations, knowing that a large piece of that $477 were salary savings that we knew about when we sort of opened the school year. In, let's follow that right, in June, you voted, because we had surplus in payroll, you voted to transfer $75,000 to our unemployment fund. That had gotten down to about $10,000. We're self-insured for unemployment, so it was a good opportunity to sort of replenish that. The last time it had been replenished, I believe, was in 2015. And so that transaction is being reflected, and keep in mind that we said we would only do that if we're up to $75,000, but we would make sure that our E and D try to get back up to 3%. So even with the $75,000, you'll see that our E and D is finishing at 3.2%, which so we're getting back up into the range of the school committee's policy, which is between 3% and 4%. The other uses of funds that we had and their uses of E and D, so they were basically uses of that $796,000 that had been certified last June, was we approved $175,000 to be used towards this budget. We always correspond our use of E and D for the following year based on our potential revenue surpluses. So we ended up with a little bit more revenue surpluses than we thought, but that's where that 175 is coming from, is from the 256. And then we did approve for the turf field $350,000. And again, that's also sort of coming from our operating surplus. We knew we had the funds to be able to take that money that had already been approved by the towns, apply it to the capital project, and therefore they didn't have to give us as much money when they funded the piece out here. So at this point, our increase to E and D is about $135,000, and you can see how that rolls forward. We are now starting our paperwork to submit to the Department of Revenue so we can get our E and D certified. And then once that's certified, then that becomes available for a school committee to use if you need it during the school year. So remember, that's our emergency funding. But until that's certified, we don't really have access to any money right now. So that's one of our goals, and our treasure is actually coming in tomorrow to start doing all those filings. And just for the new members, we are capped at 5%, so I typically show this is the most we could have, this is where we are, and this is the amount that we're under what we could, which is about half a million dollars. Any questions sort of on the operations? If you go back and look at your projections in June, I think almost every number is pretty close. I did not note transportation reimbursement when we met in June, so that might have been a little higher, but not a lot. But basically, we were, but we left in June, our numbers basically stayed the same when we closed the books. Maybe any questions on that? Okay, so as I mentioned...
Just general quick question?
Yeah.
Is it my understanding that Massachusetts Desi will pick up for any shortcomings from federal changes from the education department? Or no? So it is factored into our budget anyway, is my question?
So we have been approved, all the grants that we normally get have all been, have all been given to us for application processes. We're in the, we're the process of doing those applications, but we are not at a loss for any funds that we had anticipated having when we built the budget last year.
Gotcha, okay.
And that's finished year, next year is to be determined.
Right.
So we're living in a year where we are fully funded.
Yeah, yeah. We just got to take it year by year.
Yes, right. Good question, though.
And then if the turf field, are we having agreements with other places to use their fields while our turf field is being repaired?
Yes, Emily Sullivan has worked with other towns to allow some of our teams to practice on turf.
Yeah. How does that expect the budgets for the athletics?
No. It's all like in kind. I mean, they're, you know, they, this happens, they're not charging us for that.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. So I mean, the towns, we don't, they might have to practice at a little bit different time.
Gotcha.
But we've provided access in several towns for, it's mainly our field hockey team to have places to practice. Our soccer teams have, we've got all grass, great grass fields. In fact, I don't know if they're still playing, but they were playing when we came in. We've been actually doing some soccer games on our grass fields.
Okay.
Yep, so no, that has no impact on our budget at all. We knew that was all going to be free of, free, it was more of just the in kind between the TVL, supporting others, because at some other point, some other place is going to have their turf under construction, and we'll be able to assist them as well.
We have a history already that we have supported other schools
Yeah.
in providing turf time for them
Yeah.
in our regular schedule.
And so the other end of the year activities that will be taking part or completing in addition to filing our excess and deficiency is our end of the year financial report that we file with the Department of Ed. We are working on that right now. It's due on September 30th. Our annual audit, we will also use the same schedule. We'll probably hopefully have that for you by May. They will usually come to us now in February breaks. We found that's a good time for them and for us. And those are sort of the year-end audits before, as much as we can close fiscal year, at least I'm saying '24 is done. '25 is gearing up, but I, at this point in time, I will say I don't think we anticipate any material operating issues with fiscal year '26 based on where we are today. I wanted to just highlight, and we will, I'll give more of a complete financial report on our capital projects in October when some more of the finances are sort of finalized, because they should be finalized by the time we meet in October. But all seven new rooftop units are in and operating. It was sort of a long process this summer, but they were up and running when they were supposed to. They are dealing with still some just operation startup issues, so they, they're still on campus with us here and there, but they're very responsive. And if you're ever bored, I've got great videos of the cranes lifting up the rooftop units, and I think it is a little bit of a different visual for you if you remember what they looked like before and what they look like now. I'm sort of getting used to it, but it is a much larger spatial piece of equipment, because the other ones were sort more long and narrow. These are tall and thin and have like these fine, like they're going to take off with their, where the fans are, the exhaust fans are. But we are very happy about those, and we're hoping that the, it allows us to have, we had a couple of areas in the high school that we could not, it's control the temperatures as well as we wanted to because of the age of the equipment, so we're hopeful for that. And we're also knowing that there were several of our RTUs that were on their last leg. Basically, we were band-aiding them together. And so this, hopefully, we can sit back and enjoy seven brand-new rooftop units. And then we'll bring, be bringing forward for our fiscal year '27 capital, actually replacing or restoring the rooftop now that we've taken care of all the equipment. So stay tuned for that. But the most exciting thing that's like so visual is our turf project that basically started the day school got out. They mobilized that day. So I think there, we'll see a picture later tonight of what it looks like all torn up. So now you're seeing it almost done. We're starting the final phase today and tomorrow, which is putting down the track surface. So when you come back probably towards the end of next week, you will actually be able to probably see the blue. This will be added on later, but these are the colors that we selected for the turf. So if you see all like the big white bags out there, it has all the, it's all this material that they're going to mix and put down. And just as we talked a lot, but I think it's good to have visuals, this is actually the cushion pad that is under the turf. This is what we did not have before. So underneath all of the sort of the turf piece is this layer, and this is what's giving you that extra cushion. So this was an added layer that we had before. They were, they came in big puzzle pieces almost, and then we watched them lay them out. And then this is just a sample of the turf, and then here, in here, you can actually see, it almost looks like grass seed, but this is the Brockville. So this, you put this down, layer of sand, and then the Brockville, they've been putting that in for like the last 10 days. So they just finished doing that today. It is a remarkable process to watch it, but you see all the lines out there, the numbers, the hash marks, those are all hand-cut and put in, because literally they roll out the whole thing in green and build the lines and the markings. So it definitely has been, it's an amazing process how manual it is given today's technology. So we are very excited, and I think I put in your, the memo that our sort of opening game athletic contest is the football game on Friday, September 26th. At that time, we will be thanking our donors for the bleacher projects, and obviously the towns for the turf, but it's sort of our grand opening, about a three-year process, probably a four-year process, actually. So it'll be nice to have it open. It's, you've got state-of-the-art, the lights are incredible. When you look at your gifts, you're going to see that a parent in town donated a brand-new sound system. We just had to pay for the installation. It's incredible. I've heard it.
We all have.
We all heard it one day when they were testing it. And so it really, you know, it's, I think it's going to be a great investment, and I'm just, we want, we want it to be well taken care of, though. So it's just reeducating our, our students, our coaches of how to take care of an asset of this cost so that we can prolong its life as much as we can. And so hopefully, you're going to see us having some new techniques, cleats, like we're going to have, we're having, ordering mats, because you really aren't supposed to walk across the track with your cleats. So there are certain things that we're going to be very adamant about, at least for the first year until we get this up and rolling. But it's just been great. We've worked with great vendors, and I can't think the town's enough for coming through and improving it, because I think it's going to be great for not only the high school athletes, for actually the communities. And that is the closeout report and the capital project update.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dawn. So the only item we have for discussion is, as a, as a committee, you may have seen Angie's messages going back and forth to make sure that we have all of our subcommittees assigned. So I think we're pretty close. So this is just a sort of a final, final ask that people go through and see if there's anything else they potentially could add to the list. So there's a lot of positions on there. Some meet more than others, so also be mindful if, don't sign up for three of like the most intense time commitment ones unless you can commit to that time. Other ones are more sporadic as far as their time they meet. So Angie has sent out a new updated assignment list, so just take a look at that tonight and the next couple of days. Hopefully, we can get that filled in. Angie, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, or if Denny's permanently muted you or not?
No, that's, that's great. And we, we filled up two more spots. I sent them to Diane, and she will send me that. We are only missing, I think, three areas now.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So then it moves us on to our items for approval, which we only actually have one bucket of approvals tonight, which are our consent items, so we can vote on these as a packet. However, we do have a few items on here that are in the packet, and we do have our principals from both schools. I'm not sure if you guys have anything to add for any of the middle school or high school improvement plans, any changes that you want to call out or anything while we have you here?
No, I would say, you know, I like the process of the spring read and then putting some time and thought into it over the summer to grow it. So I would say, you know, mine has mostly stayed the same. We, one of the areas is around executive functioning, and that really came very genuine last year from our staff and sort of as we took on MTSS and WIN, which is what I need. And we really want to put a school-wide focus on executive functioning, so one of the things, there's just so many pieces to it. It's just such a large topic. So we are going to be working as, we're going to create a focus group, because we've got lots of staff in the building who are experts and have really good passion around this. So that focus group will meet, you know, four to six times over the year and come up with recommendations at the end of the year for us to do as a school community. You know, we'll look at things around binder systems and things like that. There's just so many pieces to it. So the executive functioning focus group is going to help us focus on, but I really, I rattled with it all summer, and I think that this is, there's so many great people in the building that really have expertise around this. So I'm really excited about that piece of it. But other than that, the school improvement plan remains the same from our mayor June Reed. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. So at the high school, and first of all, I just want to say that we have had a really smooth start to the school year. Kids have been fantastic. Really happy for them getting a chance to get back with one another and see friends that they haven't seen all summer, new classes, new opportunities. They're already highly engaged in their clubs and their sports and drama, so that's exciting to see. And so the light blood of the high school is back, which is really great. Our school improvement plan has pretty much remained the same from last spring, and just as a quick reminder, there are four for us. One is reimagining and sort of redesigning our library media center. We're very fortunate to welcome Amanda Brown, who's our new media center director. She's already come in, hit the ground running, redesigning some, some areas, has been serving students. We had a grand opening on Monday. We had an open house for faculty on Friday, and she's already incorporating, bringing in the English, Social Studies, and Science Departments to come in and to access the resources that are not only there physically, but also the numerous online opportunities. The one change that I noted in there is due to some unforeseen delays in some construction. We have pushed a small renovation project off until next summer. That being said, Amanda is already using, incorporating some of that space for students so that really, once we do get the finished product of it, it will be great. Our students will already have some sense of using that area in a different way, incorporating, you know, what modern libraries and media centers look like. One of the big things that we really want to try to incorporate is more technology and accessing all of those opportunities for our students and our teachers. Our other second goal is the co-teaching model. Last year was our first year that we had co-teaching at the high school, and we're now in our second year. We've actually expanded it to the sophomore year in English, math, science, and social studies. This summer, a lot of those people work together, summer professional development. We have brought them together. We've also continued our relationship with Lisa Decker, who is an expert in the field of co-teaching, incorporating gen ed and special education teachers together, providing our kids with really a challenging and high expectation environment. So we're looking to expand that and then sort of look at what we're doing well with it, and then how do we continue to expand it so that it becomes part of our repertoire. Our third one is our teacher collaboration, in particular, looking at collaborating outside of your departments. For those of you who have experience with high schools, you know that sometimes they can be departmental and kind of in silos, and we're really looking for our experts to branch out beyond. It's one of the things that I think elementary and middle schools do really well, and it's accessing expertise from across all disciplines. And our major focus there with the teachers is looking at high-impact strategies that extend deep learning for our kids. You know, there's always a place for learning that content, but it's making students, putting students at the center of their own learning and not just hearing what the teacher has to say, but rather fully engaging. And then finally, the last one, it's the second year of this goal, and that's the student sense of well-being, continuously finding ways in which we can engage our kids in activities outside of the classroom, whether that's extracurricular activities, fun events that we host, ways that we can bring the community and the schools together in different ways. You know, one example, we shifted our senior boat crews to the fall instead of the spring. A lot of the kids loved it. The weather is typically much better. There's a lot of excitement. Kids aren't exhausted by the, you know. And so it just helps generate some real positive spirit moving ahead. And we're looking to continue to do several evenings after athletic contests where kids can come, trivia nights, dances, other fun opportunities, food and pizza nights, where they can just have an opportunity to hang out with one another and socialize in a good, safe structure. So those are our four goals for the year.
Great. Any questions from committee? No? Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So we also, in our packet, we have our regional school minutes from the June 10th meeting. We, I don't know if there are any edits anybody has for that. We're good. We also have approval of gifts for the athletics department and a grant for, for the Mass Cultural Council. So any questions, comments for any of the consent items?
Can I just add a little more information? And I apologize, this wasn't in the, I wanted to make sure that the company that donated the sound system actually was named. So KRA and Rusty Wait, who's a father here, works for that company, and so that's how that came about. I will make sure we amend the memo so that they actually get named. And then, as I mentioned, we then just had to cover the installation cost of this, of the system, which was about $9,900. But it is something that we were piecing together, our sound system last year, and we had talked about doing this when the bleachers were installed, but we waited until the turf project was sort of done, so we wouldn't put brand-new speakers up there and then have all this construction going on. In fact, you're going to, you're going to have to look really hard to see the speakers, lots like how updated and, you know, turn the century they are compared to our other ones. So I just want to make sure that KRA got the notation of who the donor was.
Well, size, large volume. Exactly.
That's great. Thank you, Dawn. Okay, so with that, if there's no further questions or comments, we'll do an actual roll call, because Angie's virtual. So do I have a motion for approval?
Yeah.
Toa, do I have a second? Thank you, Lindsay. And then we'll go around the room. We'll start with Angie.
Angie Johnson, yes.
Okay, go around this way.
Yeah. Do Ash, yes.
Kim Crowder, yes.
Lindsay, yes.
Mary Louder, yes.
And Jeff Cassidy, yes. Okay, so consent items are approved. And just a couple other items here. In the packet, we do have the Dover School Committee Minutes as well as the Sherburne School Minutes from the main meetings. And then we have our next meeting is October 7th, 2025. And as always, if people have items that they want to add, please send them to myself or Angie, and we'll make sure we have them. If there is anything people already know they'd like to discuss for their October 7th meeting, can raise it now also. Only one that I have that I think would be good, because it's one of those odd ones that minor changes, but oftentimes cause some of the more disturbance, have gotten several messages about the new pickup in middle school. Maybe we just get an update of how that's going?
Sure.
For the, for the next meeting. I know we're still very much in the early stage, so after it's been going for...
No, I think we're, I think we are where we're going to land. I think it's been, it's been really good. I think, you know, it's pretty important to sort of start why we got here, and that was, we just saw an increase, especially last year, of pickup here at the middle school in particular, and people were, you know, getting here early to pick up early and leave, but what that was doing was causing a backup on Farm Street in both directions, and people were leaving lanes to, to, that weren't waiting in to get by. So we were really having like calls to the police, you know, some of our staff, so it was really becoming, and we're sending teenage drivers out there, so it was really time to address this. So over the summer, working with Dover PD, you know, and other districts that do this, but just resetting our pickup, parent pickup, five minutes after dismissal, so from 3:10 to 3:15, and that means queuing up and driving up. And it's, it's been great. You know, I think I've had a couple parents stop and say, it's actually much quicker. It's, we're done by 3:20. The place is cleared. And they like it that they don't have to be here a quarter or three, you know? So I would say that that's the feedback we've gotten. I think, you know, it's been a really interesting lesson in communication, because, you know, really timed the communication to be its own communication, sort of trying to jockey with all the opening communication, try to get it out, so really trying to be thoughtful around that. And yet, you know, today, we had a couple parents that hadn't even heard of it, you know? So my sense is those are folks that typically students go home in the bus, and today was the day they had to pick up. So they saw that as like, that's not my, so it's just interesting, right? It's like a lot of learnings. But I would say the one tweak we made was, in the past, we've had our middle school students go to the parking lot to meet a sibling. Now we've got some parents that are queuing up in there, which is fine, there's spots. If they get there a little early, we ask them to go over there. But it just made me nervous, having them in that parking lot with teen drivers, with the construction vehicles, and parents coming and going. So we're asking parents to just either come walk over and get their student and walk them back to their car, or just hop in the line. So I would say it's really good. I think we're in good shape. We have a good, there's always two of us, someone from the high school, or the two, Jen Santa Sussa and myself out there, and people have been great. You know, if they get there a quarter or three and they didn't know the communication, we ask them to either circle around, grab a spot, or come back. And we've had no ill words, you know, but I think so far, so good. No, I, you know, it's hard. We ask people to really change their routines, and we know that a big reason people are picking up is there's activities and there's things like that. picking up is there's activities and there's things like that. So we are, you know, super grateful people have been with that. So I think we'll continue on. I think, you know, there will be some days we're not out there, and that'll be where the test is, right? But I would say it was good, so.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so then I believe we can, do we have a motion for adjournment? Mary, do we have a second? Kevin, thank you for a second. I guess since Angie, you're remote, we'll do, we'll do a full roll call. Angie?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Tua?
De'ash, yes.
Kevin, yes.
Lindsay?
Lindsay Nye, yes.
Mary Louder, yes.
Jeff, yes. All right. I call this meeting at 6:03.
Thanks.